Charlie.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the selectmen's meeting on Wednesday, December 20, 2017. If you would like to join in at the beginning.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to motion to approve the expense warrant for 121217 for $87,007.7. And approve the expense wire warrant for 121917 for $22,94. And approve the expense warrant for 121917 for $1,104.29. And approve the expense warrant for 121917 for $93,963.26.
You have the motion.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion over? All in favor?
Aye.
Then I would like to acknowledge some monthly reports from other departments. The fire department monthly report for November 2017. Personnel committee minutes from 5/11/17, 6/6/17, 6/20/17, 9/21/17. And the advisory committee meeting minutes are 11/9/17.
You have the motion.
I believe the fire has an anniversary.
I know, I was just going to do that. All in favor?
Aye.
And then we have, we have an anniversary in the fire department. We have David Martel, Captain David Martel, who has been with us for 28 years. And I want to congratulate David for his dedication to the town and all of the good work that he has done here for the town of Brookfield. So congratulations, David. And then I have another announcement to make. We have a vacancy on the elementary school committee. And it's to fulfill the term of till 2018. Till 2018. And what the person would be, they would be appointed until the may election. And then they would probably, they have to take out nomination papers so that they can run for the rest of the two years that are on that term. And you can send a letter of intent to the town of Brookfield Board of Selectmen's Office, 6 Central Street, Brookfield, Mass. Or email selectmen@brookfield, at selectmen@brookfieldna.us. And the deadline is Monday, January 8, 2018. So does anybody else have anything for now? And, okay, so we'll get going. All righty, good. Oh, oh, I see another one here. "A reminder on the winter parking van is in effect in Brookfield from November 15 through April 1st for the public waste in town during the hours of 11:00 PM and 6:00 AM. There will be no parking on the streets whether or not snow is predicted. Anyone in violation is subject to a $25 fine." Do we have? Hi, Doug, why don't you have a seat?
Thanks.
All right, we have public access. Do we have anybody here for public access this morning?
I'd like to speak if I may. With the fire chief comment on public access at the end of my public access last meeting. And he's wrong in a couple of things, but public access is here for the people, okay? When we come up here before you three, you represent us, the people. I'm one of the us. And if I praise you, criticize you, or do whatever I'd like to say, that's my, that's my freedom of speech, civil rights, because that's under attack in this town. That's my right and everyone else's right here. All the towns have public access of some sort. And I don't think we should be trying to attack it in our town here. And one correction is Mr. Helwood did not start public access last. He tried to limit it. And that caused a lot of riff in our town. We had time clocks and alarms. He was going off after three minutes or two minutes. I hate to see that here. And as far as, also that individual, the fire chief said that there's no respect for you people. When I, when I speak myself, I show the utmost respect for you three. You may not like what I say, because I am critical, but that's my right. I feel that's an improvement to the town, telling you what should be changed or what may need to be changed. That's my right. And when I speak something and you don't like to hear it, Madam Chairman, you should not interrupt me and say, "That's enough, David."
I have every right to do that, Dave.
As a Madam Chairman, you do. But when I, when I-
Sometimes you get out of hand.
I've never been out of hand on public access.
And we have been insulting to people, which is not right.
I guess that's a matter of opinion.
And I feel that we've got to start cutting down these public access. We put the last one, we were, it was 20 minutes to a half hour.
Okay, well, I'm, I'll, I'll limit it.
And I'll address this more. And what I feel, I would probably stop limiting it. We're going to talk, we'll talk about this in the board. But if you have things that you would like to say, I would like you to get on your agenda.
Okay.
Instead of doing public access.
Okay, but back to what I was saying.
I think that's important. And just to allow another opinion before you get back to what you were saying, is that your point has been that the issues that you feel that you're raising are of interest to other townspeople. By not having them on the agenda, you're cheating other townsfolk that if they want to have their voices heard and they want to actually add something to that conversation, then they should have the opportunity to see that in writing prior to the meeting. So in the future, one of the things that I was going to request of the chair is that if you bring up a topic that we feel might be of interest to other people within the town, I think what we will, what would be just respectful of other townspeople is to take note of it, put it on the next agenda, and we can discuss it in a more formal manner at a, at a future time. Because it's, because it's really important that people know what's on the agenda so their voice can be heard too.
David, it's not up to you to say no.
No, no, I'm not going to say no to that. I'm saying no to that. It's my public access and I will speak and say what I want to say at public access.
Yes, but I'm saying-
You're already trying to limit my speech right now, but Beth just said-
I'm saying, I just explained to you before, is if you have things on the, that you want to talk to specifically, put them on the agenda.
If you will do that, I will, I can do that.
Yes, we will put it on the agenda. But this public access has been going much too long.
Okay, well, then I will, I will keep it to a limit, but-
And it takes up time and we have quite a bit on the agenda this morning.
It's all part of the town business, though, what I say. But what I'm getting back to is, once again, we had this selectman here who tried to limit it. And I don't think that was proper either. Bells were ringing, alarm clock.
Well, I wasn't here then, so I can't tell you about. What I'm talking about is like here today in the present. And we have to move on.
Madam Chairman, I'll take it-
I think I made my point.
Ms. Oakrath is saying, under advisement, then move on.
Yes, we will take it under advisement and we will move on. And this is the end of our public access agenda.
Okay, very good.
Unless there's somebody else in the group set that is here to speak.
Doug?
My tie has changed, I was trying to get warm.
Fair enough. You're welcome.
Do you have some?
Welcome to the water.
All right. Why don't we move on to, Bill Symton is here this morning. There he is. Come on, Bill, come on up here. And he's going to talk about the police department, a fingerprint machine purchase. We had discussed this, I know, once before about buying a breathalyzer. This was money that was left in the police budget when we built the station, right?
Yes, there's $16,361.50 left in the police station account.
Do you have it?
This paperwork, there's a folder right there that he sent to have a time.
Oh, okay, oh, I'm sorry.
And they want you to sign it.
And Sergeant Parisau and the chief have been working at getting a breathalyzer, but because of legal challenges to breathalyzers across the state, there's some question about the efficacy or legality of using a breathalyzer machine. And so that purchase was delayed because they didn't know if they spend the money, it would then-
Add value to the community.
It may be a lot, it may be something that is an $11,000 breathalyzer that they cannot legally use anymore. So, and that question has not been answered at the state level. So their, their request was that we use the remaining funds in the account rather to purchase a digital fingerprint setup and operation, which would then allow for interfacing with, I believe it's the federal background checks or wherever they do the-
Now, have they had, do they have anything down there right now that they're using?
They, I think they're still doing-
It's old school ink fingerprint test. When I went to get my FID, they, they still doing the, the old school cards.
Which, which, the, the challenge to that is a lot of people do get their FIDs in town and it takes, it's a significant process to go through that way. But with the digital, it would-
Cut the time.
Cut the time dramatically.
And I've gotten a lot of complaints from people about how long a lot of that takes to run and get back. And that would actually cut probably two to three weeks out of the process.
Yeah, so that was the, the request.
And they're all in favor of it?
Yeah, Steve and the chief passed that to me, and so I- Hey, who's the chief? Are you, are you actually in favor of this? Steve told me you were in favor of the fingerprint machine.
The fingerprint machine.
Oh, yeah, okay, okay, good. I'm assuming that he wasn't making that up.
No, 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 I think-
And so with the digital?
Yes, and it's, you may be able to speak more clearly as to what is the difference.
It's tied into the system, so it does almost, I don't want to say instantaneous checks, but it'll really help in, in the firearms process. You know, the, the fingerprint checks will come back a lot quicker. Most times they come back that afternoon. So instead of them waiting several weeks to get it back, it's just one step further. You know, the initial plan was for, for a BT machine. It's kind of up in the air whether or not they're going to be able to be used in court. I would assume at some point they'd be able to, but I mean, this is definitely-
We can revisit it and go that the investment would be worthwhile.
Right, exactly, so.
So, so then the request for the selectmen's is to authorize expenditure of remaining funds for that, for the-
Digital?
Digital.
Fingerprint machine.
Fingerprint machine.
Yeah, you just got some technical name on it.
In place, in place of the breathalyzer, so.
I would like to make a motion.
You have a motion to the side.
I'll second that.
If not, any discussion over it? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, good, thank you.
Is there CDPG stuff on here too, or?
Here's some more agendas if you want, one, two, three.
Yes, this is the next one coming. The job is, yeah.
So I'll, I'll stay here for a minute.
It's the notice of the award. Can you wanna, would you like to explain something on that?
Sure. Karen probably has all the paperwork figured out on this one, because Andrew-
It said that, he just sent it this morning, it's right there. Yep, that's it, yeah.
Yep, that's it. Essentially, we've received grant funding for the design work for Hayden, Hayden, Hayden Draper, High Street project, so some, and I'm not the town water guy, so I can't explain it. But it's infrastructure improvements in those areas. We've got grant funding for it. We've received bids for the design work. Yes, at our yesterday meeting, we evaluated the proposals. And this is, would be authorizing, the selectmen would authorize the, us to, contract would be chosen bidder for that work. Like, is it Leonard?
And I see, yes, if-
Leonard engineer?
Yeah, Leonard engineer, yeah, so that would, this would then pay, I mean, all the money is in place through the grant, so this is authorizing us to extend it.
And I know it says it's the final contract with the price, it's not to exceed $39,550.
Correct. And that's all CDPG fund.
And that's the design work for the-
Yeah, that's the design.
Correct.
Okay, I would like some approval.
You have a motion to the side.
Is this on?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Karen, will send that along to Andrew?
Yes, I'm going. Great.
And Doug, I would like to thank you for all the hard work you did here in town. For all the things that friends, with the friends, or, you know, CDP. I appreciate that very much.
We had, we signed the town hall bathroom paperwork last meeting, correct?
Yep, that's the time.
So that should be coming due.
That goes along also.
Actually, I'll stick up for one more second if I may.
Fair enough.
The, I'd like to just, in, in public, really give praises to Al Jones and Don Taff for the furnace work that they did, working with McDonald's, because they did a great job facilitating that installation of the furnace. And also Al and, uh, who's the guy that does the clock?
Skip Nielsen.
Skip Nielsen with their work on the clock. I think it's, it's been tremendous what they've done and at no cost to the town. Because of their connections and relationships, we've gotten Sturbridge out here-
No, I saw that.
Yeah, that's pretty impressive.
It is.
Making it very safe.
Yeah, and it's a safe way to access it. So they were able to pull down the front dial, they're going to get the gear replaced at no cost because of other, also connections that Al has with, with another company.
That's wonderful.
So I actually want to say it's-
I'd like to congratulate them all.
Yeah, the two of them have done tremendous work. Well, the three, if you're talking Don for the furnace too.
Al Jones and Skip Nielsen and Don Taff. And I would like to thank them for all the hard work that they've done here for this community.
They've done great, great stuff.
Mr. Nielsen used to be a selectman here.
Yes, he did.
Do we want to send him a formal note?
Yeah, we could send him, yeah, we could, Karen. We could send him a note.
That would be great. And then were there any of the questions? I think that's the question, right?
Thank you. A note to all three parties, or who do you want to send a note to?
We could send it to all of them.
Okay.
Okay, I would, uh, the chief probably has to get back down.
Yeah, we'll take you out of order.
I would like to bring it up under other. And before I go on, I would like to congratulate, I had the pleasure of going to a meeting of the Mass Police Association. And to the dinner, I was invited by Chief Blanchard. And he is now the president of Massachusetts-
Central Mass.
No, Central Massachusetts Police Association. So I, I'd like to congratulate him.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Have a seat.
Sorry, this is a short notice.
Oh, yeah, we just want to make sure that you have what you need for, for January, because I know that scheduling's been such a challenge for you.
So I'm looking to appoint Richard Cattolieri, Matthew Niles, and Justin Dufault as reserve officers, starting out at $16 an hour in the effective date, appointment date, until June 30th of 2018.
Do any of them have any, any training?
Yeah, Richard Cattolieri is a sergeant with the Worcester County House Corrections. He is also an operator on the, on the Semilac unit, which is a SWAT team for Worcester County. Matthew Niles is currently a part-time police officer in North Brookfield. He is a full-time firefighter in the town of Ludlow. He's a firefighter, paramedic in the town of Ludlow. Justin Dufault is a full-time police officer with Springfield Technical Community College. He's also a member of the National Guard and a volunteer fighter, firefighter for the town of Muncie. So all those skills will come in very handy. He is full-time academy trained. But again, he's just being appointed as, as a part-time.
Well, with all of their, you know, what you told me, and that all three of them sound fully qualified.
Yes, absolutely. And, you know, they went through the interview process and, and they were, they were good.
So maybe our next meeting after the first three years, you could maybe bring them in.
Absolutely, I'll definitely bring them in.
Introduce them.
Yeah. Yep, absolutely, I'll bring the three of them in and introduce them to you guys in the head of town. So moving forward.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? On favor?
All right, thank you very much. Karen, I'll have all the paperwork later on this afternoon for you.
Okay, great, I'm looking to see.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Thanks for fitting us in.
Take it easy.
All right, now we're going to add to discussion about a grant writer slash developer position. This is a discussion over. And Clarence, would you like to lead the discussion on this?
Well, there's, there's work to be done in the area of grants. This, by the way, I spent, yesterday afternoon, I UMass collecting the final documents on the Tobin campground. And I spent a good deal of time over the last year managing that grant.
I know, you have, you worked very hard on it.
And, and so we've got that, and there's, there's more work to be done. So just as that example, and I would then look to have you look back to the history of the highway department, where over numbers of years, you've probably averaged in the order of a million or a million and a half, a million and a half dollars a year. And we've, we've quite honestly been paid to, to have her work. So the town really didn't pay for her services through, through each of those years. So what I, what I'm recommending or suggesting, and again, there's been conversations about town administrator. I'm not, and I've never talked about a town administrator. What I'm talking about, in, in my interest, is to have someone focused on this building. Especially as we've now started to move forward on reconstruction. There's maybe hope that we can get to the second floor. There's lots of work to be done. And there's, there are grant monies, and the, the next cycle for Mass Historical is January. It's, the, the clock starts on getting 50% money. And it's there. So what I, what I was recommending or suggesting is that a role, and it could be part-time, where you actually have a person go secure the grant and then manage the grant and manage the work. Again, when I, when we just talked about the clock, I mean, Al's job is not to climb a, a ladder truck to take keys off a, off a building, so, or clock hands off the building. So again, it's taking time away from Al's work. If we look at the furnace, takes the time away from Al's work. Bill is a full-time person, he owns a business.
I know that's-
Out of the grace of God, he's able to do the things he does. And so what, what I'm suggesting and recommending is that we strongly consider at town meeting, putting forth a position, which would be a part-time position, focused on the securing of grants.
And the management.
And the management is important, because many of these grants actually have administrative dollars that tie to them. Where, where-
The person can self-fund.
They can self-fund the darn stuff.
So this would be something I could go forward with the Personnel Board. And can you maybe write a job description?
I sent an email to Karen.
Okay.
That, yeah, while you were away. I sent an email to Karen to describe these functions. And I, and again, I think the job pays for itself.
And then what we can do, our next meeting, is that we can, you know, go over it and write the position or how much we feel it should be paid. And maybe you would want to come in too and do some more explaining.
More than happy to.
Okay. And we can, even in, I, we could get it in, we haven't set, I know we haven't set the January meeting. Has free cash come back at all?
Well, that was another thing we probably ought to talk about is our timing for those meetings.
Because if we could get it done, we could bring it up and put in the job classification for the special meet. I don't know if we'll have time to do that or if we have to wait till spring.
I, I think, I think it ought to be spring. I mean, I, there's no rush to do this.
Oh, all right.
But at the same time, I wanted to get it on the table to say, I was not talking about a town administrator. I haven't talked about a town. What I'm talking about is a way to successfully improve this building.
I, I agree with you totally. And there should be like somebody coming in to do this. I mean, I commend Cindy for all the hard work that she has done. And I know it takes time out of her job and I'm, I, she's probably even here in her own personal time zone.
Many times.
So we do need, it is a need to have somebody come in and do this. And so I would like to make a motion that we go ahead and develop a position for a grant writer. Develop a position.
I'll second that.
I thought that was your motion, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Karen, could you just drop me a little note for when we have our next personnel meeting? And Clarence will come and he will, we're going to drop the description. And we will have to post that, oh boy, as a joint meeting, because it will be the both of us there.
Yep.
We have to do that.
Let's do it.
Okay. Yeah, the next one is to sign the HR agreements. We've, this, this was money that we got from, from the community compact that was awarded to the Personnel Board. And there was two different ones. There was one to help us like with our Personnel Book was $15,000. And the other one was to get help with an HR person for another $15,000. And so I think it's good we got this bid. And we would like to hire the, it's from the Collins Center up there. UMass, it's a public management. And I would like permission to sign this contract.
You have a motion to sign.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Jeremy, I'm filling in the rest of it.
Pardon me?
It's a little bit to fill in, or I can do that.
I'll fill in the rest while you just sign it.
All right, now we have some more comments that look like just one. All righty, we have one here. For, we can probably take them all and, you know, I'll make the motion to sign all of these and to accept them. So the first one is for Bay Path Spirits. And the manager is Peter J. McNamara. And that's at the corner of South Maple and Maple Streets. The next one is for Patricia White, DBA, Whitesland, Crystal Road.
That's all, that's a whole packet, the rest of them.
Okay, all right, sorry. The next one is for Boswell Enterprises Incorporated, DBA, Central Package Store, Jason Boswell, manager. And it's the corner of Central and Pleasant Street. And the next one is for the General Dollar Store at Route 9. Okay, and this is another one for the Original Clown Box. And it's Nicole Sedd is the proprietor. And that's on 53 South Maple Street. And then there is one for the Brookfield Rod and Gun Club. And this is for the Entertainment License and the Juke Box. And its manager is Sue Ellen Grimes. And this is another one. It's for the Tick Top Country Store, Sarah Heller proprietor. And that is right next door here on Central Street. And the last one here, I think that's the last one.
I'd say there are two more.
Oh, is this two more there? Okay, all right. And the next one is for Cumberland Farms on Route 9. And the next one is for the Brookfield Congressional Church, which is right next door to us here on Central Street.
I have a motion to sign.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll pass them around. Next on the agenda this morning is special use permit. These are more, I think, for the fishing-
It's only one.
There's only one, and this is for the Fishing Dobbies that held on my quit off.
The endless fishing dobbies.
Okay. Okay, and let's see, requesting is Nessabon fourteen-foot small boat division east map, that's what it says. So I would like permission to have the clerk to sign the special permit.
Your motion to that effect.
I'll second.
I'm discussing, all in favor?
Aye. Other, you already did it, so...
Other, we already did it.
Yeah, which were the appointments, so...
All right, so, okay, then we have some correspondence, there's some correspondence. Is that in the purple one?
Yeah.
We have some correspondence here from Boston Gas and National Grid. Okay. For Boston Gas, it's a typical, what it is, it's a typical residential non-haring customer using ninety thermes per year, will experience an actual bill increase of thirty-three dollars and ninety-four cents, or fifteen percent more on their bill. And the other one is a typical residential heating customer using seven hundred and seventy-four thermes per year, will experience an annual bill increase of eighty dollars and seventeen cents, or seven percent. Is there any questions on that at all?
And that was based on, they're requesting approval of those rates based off of some infrastructure enhancements, correct?
Mm-hmm. So that's just an announcement, we don't have to vote on that.
Right.
Now, this is another one. This is a news release from National Grid. Customers who reported the scam, there's, I guess there's been some scams going on. And they said that customers who reported the scams say they were contacted by telephone by individuals who claimed to be from National Grid who advised the customers they had passed due bounds on their utility bill. The scammer's warned that services would be shut off immediately unless the customer purchases a prepaid debit card in a specific amount, such as Green Dot Card, and providers, and provides the caller with the card's account number, or in case of business customers by way of a Western Union money transfer. This is a huge warning not to sign it. Any comments? Anybody on that?
No, there was, there was one thing I forgot to bring up under other, I don't know if you wanted to entertain it or not. I know Karen's been doing a phenomenal job getting the minutes out, kind of more timely to the meetings, but I had a couple of different department heads request if it's possible to get a copy of the agenda and just like, really short, quick notes, like a bullet pointer too about what we discussed in the selectmen's meeting, just so they're aware of it.
I don't, I haven't done that since I've been here, only because it's the time factor. If anyone requests anything, I'm glad to do it, but I'm hesitant to do that, because it just, it, it's difficult enough to get all the minutes out in time.
Okay.
I just don't want to commit to that.
Fair enough.
People are welcome to commit, I mean, they're welcome to come to the meetings, it's also on cable access. I mean, Sharon's pretty speedy in putting it on, from what I understand, so...
Oh, she puts it on YouTube right off the bat.
Oh, I understand. I got correction, I'm not the one responsible for posting them, that is Danielle Kane, who's been doing a fantastic job.
Credit to her.
Credit to Danielle.
Yeah, they can do it right after.
Karen does, she's busy here during the day, and I really think like she's, she doesn't really have the time to do all that, but there's plenty that they can see. They can come in here, like Karen said, they watch, they can go on YouTube, because the meetings are on YouTube, what, within a couple of days?
It depends on Danielle's schedule. We try to get them up between three and five.
I know it's the very...
Sometimes it's a week and a half, but that's the most allowed.
But they are free to come in here and see Karen and see the minutes of the meeting.
Okay.
This brings up another thought, Chairman, for you to entertain. Back to the timing of the work that the finance team's doing, I mean, one of the other things that we've slowed down is the meetings, with the employee meetings. And so, and we've delayed that for the simple reason they're busy with this other stuff, and that's much more important. So we've kind of lost a...
That communication.
Length of communication, which is fair. What, do we have an inkling as to what we want to do as far as this special town meeting? Have you had any thoughts, or should we do that in early January?
We should probably do that in early January, because I don't know if we have had the...
Full audit results.
We have heard anything about the free cash has been certified yet?
Yeah, that's what, so I'd love for you to have a conversation with them.
Yes, I will have a conversation.
On the ninth, we can, we can start.
Carrie, and then I also would like to have, after the first review, I'd like to have a review with the treasurer and have the chief coming with her also, I'd like to have that on the agenda.
Yep.
And I will talk to Carrie, maybe I'll have the whole finance team come in too.
That'd be excellent.
And I'll just report, and if Karen has the time, I'll have Karen make some notes, and then we can report back.
And we can kind of noodle that timing to get in front of...
And then, now, were you going to have a roundtable to finish the procedures book?
Well, that's what I wanted to start off, so maybe the ninth, if we have that on the agenda, we can have a conversation as to that timing, because I do, we're at the section for the treasurer, so we're absolutely at that point. But again, I do not want to interfere with the work that they're doing.
Oh, I know, they were all doing an excellent job, and they're so busy catching up and trying to work as hard as they can.
Well, and that also brings up the other idea of the grants and what grants might be available, there might be grants to take another step. We've done a good job with the employees as to upgrading that document, revising it based on the town's procedures, but I think we need to consider something more.
Yes.
And so, once we've kind of locked in on the first round or first revision, then we can look to other grants possibly that might be managed.
Okay, another thing that was mentioned to me today is the finance, the treasurer and the assistant treasurer would like to have a roundtable, and they said they would have re, you know, facilitator, and what they would like to do, I think there's been some problems in filling out invoices and problems like that.
Yep.
So they said they could show everybody just what they need, you know, what is their responsibility, the addresses, because it's not a responsibility of the treasurer to have the proper address, it's up to the departments that are filing these invoices.
So maybe, Linda, what I can do is pass on the notebook that's got the changes, because like I say, we're at the treasurer's section, and we never got that far because of the audit activity. So now, that's, those kinds of things are the exact things that want to be in that procedure. So let me hand, between now and then, I'll give to Karen the notebook, and highlight the area that you should consider when you facilitate that meeting.
Yeah, because they want to do that, they think it's very important.
It is.
It is. Okay, Beth, you can hand me those. All right, well, I'd like to have a motion that we will adjourn this town meeting to go into executive session.
We have one more...
One more thing, okay.
One more other. So I spent, as I said earlier, I spent yesterday afternoon at UMass, this is the final report of the campground. This is the educational resource summary and the recommendations for what future activity goes on. This is a public document that can be distributed, and this is the National Historic Application Registration. What I'd like to do is on the January ninth meeting, if I could have a moment on the agenda to explain these things, and further what documents would be here, and would be held as confidential, because things have to be held confidentially, and so we'll do that on the ninth. And now I would offer a motion to adjourn, to move to executive session.
May I ask you a question? Are you going to continue morning meetings, or are you going to, why are we having morning meetings versus the evening?
Well, they recently had it because I was away, and I didn't get into it last evening, so this is why we had the morning meeting today.
Okay, because you had one prior to this too?
Um, that was to discuss a couple of things, we went to executive board session, basically that's what that was for.
So, but you're going to go back to the U...
Oh, yes, but if something does come up, David, that we feel we have to meet in the morning, we will meet.
Right, exactly.
And it's our discretion to do that.
And, you know, I'm full-time employed, and I'm probably the one that's hardest, hardest on, but, you know, if that's what I need to do in order to properly service the town, then I'll make arrangements.
Okay, but I mean, you're going to also keep, maybe other people in the community would like to be at the meetings too, a different, on the agenda, different things.
What, during the morning?
No.
At night? Oh, we will do them like I...
That's what I meant, we have too many morning meetings.
I just told you why we have to do them.
No, I understand, I'm just going on what Beth said.
And before we, we have a...
We have a motion to adjourn, which does not allow discussion, so...
And it's, and we will go under, I should probably say. It goes under exemption number six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. If any discussions may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of a governmental body and a person, firm, or corporate.
Do you have that motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Lincoln Eye?
Snyder Ray.
Coffey Eye.
And then we will go back into regular session.
For adjournment.
Is that still going, Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to extend my, on behalf of myself and the other board of selectmen, a very Merry Christmas to all of our residents, and I would like to thank them for all the support that we've had over the years, and I also wish them a very healthy and prosperous New Year, and we will not be meeting again until the ninth of January.
Good job.